Okay, good evening, welcome. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, November 20th, 24 to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence. Please think about what you need to think about. Thank you, everyone. If you please stand and join Alderwoman McGinnis in leading us all on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Crupp, if you please, call the roll.
Ardone.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Reinards.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
T. Dunn.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Burkholder.
Here.
Ten percent, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So, good evening and welcome, everyone, again, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and those who are viewing through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but as to your participation, please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. For folks in here, just a kind reminder, if you put your cellphone on silent or turn it off simply, that it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council tonight on any particular agenda at the end, wait to be recognized and then please come to the podium. There will be microphones above you. We'd love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as a body and not to any one individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you very much. City Administrator Maximer, is there any update tonight?
No update tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one public hearing this evening under Community Development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinards will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing on the proposed conveyance of the vacated, unimproved right-of-way located west of Marquette Street between West 7th Street and the mid-block alley to Jack's Home Improvement Company petitioner. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Next, communications, I just, big kind of day tomorrow, I'm sorry, not tomorrow, Saturday, festival of trees, tree lighting, other things, weather's getting cold, so, you know, pay attention to the elements and, you know, some things are at night, so just keep an eye on everybody, especially little kids, a lot of things going on. Anybody else? I see, okay, Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. Just a reminder that tomorrow is the last fifth ward meeting of the year, and it'll be held at Fire Station 3 tomorrow evening at 5:30. So, Fire Station 3, the address is something on Brady Street. Station 3. What did you say? 300 East 42nd. So, yeah, I still say Brady Street. But, okay, thank you. So, all are welcome. 5:30 PM is when it'll start. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Kind of a big place. Okay. We have four areas of discussion: community development, public safety, public works, and finance. First area is, I apologize, anybody else? Community development, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinards will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. We do have 12 items on our community development agenda this evening, and I'll start with item number one. It is a third consideration ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the north urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration ordinance for case ORD 24-004 being the request of the City of Davenport to amend various sections of Title 17 entitled zoning of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa regarding residential building design standards. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, I do want to make a comment that this was brought up weeks ago when we started this discussion by Alderman Rick Dunn, that there was concerns about construction materials for accessory structures, and so how it currently reads is accessory structure shall be constructed out of material intended for long-term exposure to the elements, and we struck out the phrase prohibited materials include but are not limited to cloth, fabric, canvas, plastic sheets, and tarps. We would like to bring that clause back in, and so I am going to make a motion to delete Section 6 from the proposed ordinance in regards to the accessory structure. There's a motion and a second. Is there any conversation on the motion? Okay, then we'll go to a vote.
Can I ask who seconded that real quick?
Thank you.
Alderman Reinards. Okay. Newton.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Burkholder.
Yes.
Reinards.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
T. Dunn.
Yes.
Ardone.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
And Lynch.
Yes.
So, 10 yeses.
All right. That amendment passes unanimously, and are there any other comments on this item as amended? All right, we'll move on to item number three. Item number three is a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Fair Oaks Foods. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving a development agreement with 227 Leclerc LLC for the Riverwatch Place Project and authorizing the city administrator or designee to execute necessary documents. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Step to the name, step to the lectern and state your name and address or word, please.
Judith Lee, Second Ward. I've got some questions on this that I'm looking for answers, and since I'm looking for answers, I'm going to request you to put this on discussion. The first one is, has there been a geotech study of the site and can the soil structure and bedrock support two four-story buildings? Have they looked at the groundwater, because there probably quite a bit of groundwater there as well, and do we know the extent of the coal oil contamination on the site? How far does it go? Clause one in the agreement says it will comply with, the developer will comply with all state and city codes, including a little of streetscaping, but it does not include compliance with federal and state codes for environmental water quality, national pollution discharge elimination system, NEPTI's permits, and contamination remediation of the site. The YWCA, YMCA, whatever it is up at the top, which is where all the coal oil starts at the old railroad repair station, that is under an expedited settlement agreement under the Clean Water Act with the feds right now, starting in 2020. So, that could also happen down here, I believe, and I think that needs to be answered. Clause two states that the project would be finished before the city rebuilds the intersection of 3rd and 4th Street on River Drive and before the city elevates Leclerc and 3rd. Are those two projects, which are related to the flood mitigation and are very important, are they being delayed for this project under agreement, or would this project just go up so quick and we're not going to get to the flood mitigation? I'd like an answer to that. Clause two also states that no sidewalks would be required. This entire area on both sides of that triangle is really unsafe for pedestrians. We've got the boats coming in there, and if people want to walk, I remember when the first boat came in, they actually had the police department down there to get people across the street safely that wanted to walk. So, I would say rather than waving sidewalks for this, this should be the start of getting sidewalks in this area, because I believe this area needs sidewalks. There's a lot going on down there, and there'll be more. So, rather than waving, I think that ought to be changed to sidewalks are required. Clause three agrees to rebate hotel and motel tax, which would be paid to the Department of Revenue of the State, and then it'd be 75% for years 1 to 10 and 50% for the next five years, and then when the state pays it back, it would go to developer. That seems like a lot of tax to rebate for something that I'm not sure we even need. And then six, my sixth one is, the last time this was up, Alderman, a large, Newton requested the answers to, I believe it was seven questions, if I remember right, and they were all excellent questions, and those answers have not been shared with the public, and I believe they should before you take a vote on this. Either bring it up, your staff or council during this agenda item, or put it on discussion so that those answers can be provided to the public next week. I also have a question. They talk about raising the whole site. How high are they planning on raising this site? Are we talking two feet, five feet, 10 feet? What is it going to take? Because this is in a floodway and a flood zone. What are they proposing to do and how will that affect any movement of the plume of coal oil and other contaminations under that site? So, there's still a lot of questions for this that I would like council to get the answers to and share with the public, including myself. Thank you.
Step to the lectern and state your name and address or word, please.
Pete Stopoulos, I'm from Bettendorf, Iowa. One of the developers at 227 Leclerc, here to answer any questions, but specifically address Mrs. Lee's comments. From the environmental perspective, we have engaged a highly reputable firm to handle this process for us, as we've done with every other development that we've done down at Davenport, so this is really no different from our perspective. Obviously, it's a much more visible site, but we've run into challenges at many of our sites, and we've handled them all quite well, and that's kind of the job of the developer, is to hire the right people, put them in place, and execute the development. So, that's what I have to say now, but I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you. We'll continue to take public with comment, and then if any of the Aldermen have questions, we'll call you back up. Is there anyone else from the public who's here to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, we'll move to council with comments. Anyone from the council? All right, we'll start with Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. I did want to ask, there are a couple of things that, Mr. Stopoulos, if I could ask you a couple of questions. Could you talk about, you said you're doing environmental, could you talk about any details of what you've done or planning to do?
We've done a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 study, and we've engaged TerraCom with that so far, and the plan is to, once we have our development, the site plan finalized, and we are, to that note, we're working with, I got actually an email today from H.R. Green, and so we're trying to get our civil engineer, Austin Engineering, to work with H.R. Green, so that the issue of connecting the site with the flood mitigation efforts will be, we'll put it together like a nice little puzzle piece. We're not trying to sidestep that, we're trying to work in conjunction with H.R. Green. But as it relates to the environmental, I actually had a conversation with Mel Penns at the DNR yesterday about the site, and Mel's comment was essentially, this is a garden variety urban site. He's well aware of what's happened north of the site, but as it relates to what evidence or records that the DNR has, right now, this is quote-unquote "a garden variety site in an urban environment such as downtown Davenport."
Okay. And would you, I'm going to take you back to the Phase 1, so you've done the Phase 1, can you explain to folks here what that is, what that means, and what the Phase 2 is?
Sure. Phase 1, essentially just the history of the site and the businesses that may have operated on that site or near the site since the site existed, which is a long time ago. And I think the major concern was the French and Hex site that existed across the street from the site, not on the site, and they produced, if I'm not mistaken, steel wheel rims for tractors, someone probably knows better than I do in this room, and obviously at that point in time, the modus operandi was to just dispose of waste on their site, and they did that, and that was 100 and change years ago. So, as it relates to the Phase 1, that's the evidence we have of the neighboring parcels, and then the Phase 2 is obviously a little deeper dive where they actually take soil samples, and they've done that. They did that last year sometime, I think.
Okay. All right. And one other, and I will let you go, and I have, so, in terms of height, if you could, I don't know who to other, to ask about you, how much it would be raised, or, and I know there is, I know one end of it's in the floodway, but it's
Correct.
But not all of it's in the floodway.
No.
Part of it's in the floodplain, but do you know approximately how much, or is that to be determined?
It's to be determined, but Austin Engineering, who we engaged for the last picture house for 400 West River, 400 West River down the street, that site was also raised, we put that building on a pedestal to get it out of the floodway, or floodplain, excuse me. In this case, there will be no building in the floodway, and that's what, one of the reasons we're working with H.R. Green, is to do the hydrology studies and make sure that there are no, we're not having any missteps here. But as it relates to what, how we're raising it, my understanding is, I think we're trying to get the base level of the building at or above the 500-year floodplain, I think. It's whatever we did at 400 Rivers, I think the same method that Austin wants to use for this site.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I did, thank you, that's all I have for you right now. If I could also ask our city manager, there's been a lot of discussion of, as we've talked about this project and I think the history of this project and other projects in the city about superfund sites or, you know, and could you explain a little bit more about that, because it's, I think it's a term that I am confused about, and this is not that, but could you, could you give us a little clarity on that?
I will try to simplify as best I can. It's a difficult topic, but I will try to simplify. So, 1980, there was a piece of legislation approved called the Comprehensive Environmental Response Compensation and Liability Act, and that is CIRCLA for short, an acronym. Superfund stems from that, and superfund refers to the trust fund that was created by CIRCLA to pay for some of these cleanups, for site cleanups. CIRCLA is somewhat of a mouthful, so people kind of latched on to the term superfund and have used that interchangeably for decades, perhaps erroneously, but that's what we are stuck with using, using that term. So, as defined by the U.S. EPA, a superfund site is an uncontrolled or abandoned site or properties where hazardous waste or other contamination is located, and the federal, this is the key part, and the federal government is or plans to be involved in a cleanup effort. Many of these sites are listed on the National Priorities List, the worst of the worst. Common contaminants found at EPA superfund sites include asbestos, lead, radiation, and dioxins. There are currently no superfund sites listed on the EPA website in Scott County, and 227 Leclerc Street is not listed as a superfund site with the EPA. There are other classifications of contaminated sites that the U.S. EPA uses. Two of those, underground storage tanks, I think you're familiar with, and the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act, RECRA, that contains, that addresses contaminated sites that have treatment, storage, and disposal facilities, and those are, those are regulated sites under the EPA. Neither of those categories involve 227 Leclerc Street, this project. The fourth EPA classification does address this property, contamination property, and that is calling it a brownfield. Brownfields are real properties, the expansion, development, or reuse of which may be complicated by the presence or potential presence of a hazardous substance, pollutant, or contaminant. Generally, the federal government is not involved in brownfields. State programs play a significant role in cleaning up and helping to revitalize these sites, frequently through state voluntary cleanup programs such as the Iowa DNR Land Recycling Program, which is what is being discussed on this. There are numerous brownfields in Davenport, and 227 Leclerc Street is listed as a brownfield on the U.S. EPA's website. So, of those four classifications, the brownfield is one that they defer to the states to take a look at and regulate that development, and 227 Leclerc is a brownfield according to the EPA.
And you, and you were part of the conversation with Mr. Penns, right?
Correct.
The city had their own conversation.
Correct.
And he, and he, is this what he confirmed, or?
That and more. He did call it a garden variety contamination site, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. We'll go to Alderwoman Newton.
Thank you. Can we start off by having someone from staff answer the questions that were specifically asked by our constituent Lee?
Bruce Burger, Community and Economic Development. I'd be remiss, I didn't actually write all of them down, so I'm not sure. I have all of them, but I can start to kind of address, and then perhaps we can have a dialogue too, if anybody else wants to remind me of some of them. I think the developer addressed the height, or started to address the height from the early discussions, I think, with their engineering staff and our engineering team. We're looking at raising the street roughly two feet, and I think that's roughly the dimension that they've talked about for the podium that they plan to use, but I think that's still to be determined and worked out. I'm trying to remember some of the other
Sidewalk waiver?
Oh, thank you. Sidewalk waiver. The, to be clear, I think the question maybe was addressing, or interpreted that we weren't requiring sidewalks, and to the contrary, we are. The acknowledgement in the draft agreement is that the, and it won't be delaying the floodplain-related efforts, to the contrary, that that will take some time, and so the, if approved, the development, private development on that site would occur before the floodplain development stuff would occur in the street, and as a result, the discussion of the height level is something that public work staff wanted to work through with the engineering team, the developer, because it could be that the, let's say the hotel is built and finished before the street project would start, and that would create perhaps a larger dimension difference, and so the street project will likely impact the right-of-way, and so the right-of-way, we would normally require them to have the sidewalk done at the completion of the hotel project, and then it would perhaps within a couple of months be torn out by the street project. And so the idea was, in this agreement, to acknowledge that time difference and to allow them to be able to open with some sort of temporary measure for the sidewalk, and then, once the street project is complete, then the developer team would be ordered to put in the actual sidewalk and streetscape-related work, so. So, that maybe underscored that one, sorry.
I think there was a question regarding a geotech study.
Oh. In terms of that, I'm not sure, I think the developer could probably answer that question better. It sounds as if they're still in the process of doing that. They've shared with us that they need to go through U.S. Army Corps of Engineer review, which also involves the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, so I think some of that work probably is yet to be done.
I think another question away was federal laws left off of clause number one.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand that one, too. The, we can certainly add whatever we'd like to in our draft agreement. Generally, we don't often do a laundry list of all the various laws and compliance things that they have to comply with, but just make sure that at least our local ones are, but we could certainly add that language if we wanted to.
And I do believe another question was of getting the information out to the public of the questions that were posed two cycles ago. How do we move about doing that? Is that something that you can provide from the floor, or something that you can provide subsequently by maybe amending, or I don't know how we get that information to the public, but I do think that that's information the public should have on the item.
Certainly. In fact, our communications director and I discussed this last week. I think that's something we could easily upload, or we could do a shortened version of it if you'd like. Lots of ways we could address that, too, and maybe with your permission, too, that there were a couple of things we talked about, and maybe our city administrator referenced tonight, too, there might be a couple of these tweaks that you want to substitute for the agreement, and you may want to add that. That's the language that, depending on how the rest of your discussion goes here tonight, we can certainly have that ready for, in the packet that goes out at the end of the week, too.
I don't have any questions for you. I do, I do may have some follow-up questions that I can meet with you on, and I know I have some follow-up questions with our legal department. I do have a comment, though, more to our new city administrator. So, this item came before the agenda prior to your service, and it was tabled for two cycles. One of the main reasons the item was tabled was because it was, came as a surprise to many on council, including myself. I think an item of this magnitude should be one whereby the council should actually be briefed on prior to it hitting an agenda item. I also think, like in hearing tonight, you had a discussion with people from the DNR, and some questions were answered. Things of that nature should probably take place before an item comes before the, you know, before council on an agenda. And again, I know this is all before your time, but just so you know where I stand, and I think some of my colleagues will probably echo that, we would very much appreciate receiving information when it's not, you know, just a normal item in advance, so that we can ask some of these questions, because obviously we did receive some information on the questions asked, which now creates some follow-up questions, and just for purpose of timeliness and moving matters forward, it would be helpful to know of such prior to its being posted on an agenda item. And I know that when it came before the agenda, I had no information on the matter, and I understand it's a matter, from what I hear, that's been in the works for years to that point. It makes more sense that we have that information in advance, not just on an agenda item, and I know speaking to some of my colleagues who are not new to council, they also did not have that information, and obviously they can comment on that today, but I think going forward, when an item of this magnitude comes before the council, we should be properly briefed in advance of it hitting the agenda item, so we have the time to actually vet the item, understand it, and ask any necessary questions, whether it be of staff or even of the developer. Thank you.
Duly noted.
I yield the floor back to you, Alderman Gripp.
Alderman Rick Dunn.
Thank you. So, it's not a superfund site, but it's still a brownfield site, correct? I mean, for those who have lived here long enough, remember when they built the Quad City Times, that it was also a brownfield site and ended up being quite a cleanup, to where they actually had to put in five wells to monitor things for years. So, I guess my question is, if we start this project and we run into problems, who's going to be liable to clean up the mess if we get into a big mess, if we find that it is actually contaminated worse than what we think? Is that going to be the developer? Is that going to be the city? Is that, who, where does that, where does that liability fall? Because that's a concern.
So, I've looked into this. Obviously, with anything legal-related, courts have the ultimate jurisdiction, but upon my reading, the courts would look at for liability of costs associated with the cleanup, because the cleanup could be done by the state or the federal government, depending on what's needed. They would first look to property owners within the title chain that have either, they were either the polluters, or they contributed to the polluting, or they were the ones who disturbed the site requiring the cleanup. That would be the first look. The city, in my estimation, as long as it does not exert control or, you know, finite management, like dictating, you have to use these companies, you have to use our trucks, you have to do, you have, you basically are project managing it to an extent of pretty much calling out the shots of the development, would not be in a line for liability. So, and so, and how the law kind of breaks it up is passive, which tax incentives, tax abatements, things like that are considered passive inducements and do not affect the liability equation, whereas an active inducement or an active management, like what I just described, of kind of doing project management work, could put the city in a liability state.
Okay, so if, if the developer got into this project and decided it's way too much, and they just decide to back out, right, find whatever in the ground and just to say, "Well, we're done here," what happens then? Who's going to clean up? Who, we're going to leave it like that, or, you know, you know what I mean? That's, that's my biggest concern, is if, if they do run into a mess, do they have the resources to address that, or technically can they just walk away from it? Because we've seen people walk away from things before, and the cities had to go in and clean up the mess. So, that's, that's my big, one of my biggest concerns. My other concern is, you know, you look at occupancy rates, right? Do we really need another hotel downtown? I mean, that's not the question for you, I mean, I get that, I get that, you know, we can't, development's development, but we're, they're asking for rebates on hotel motel tax, you know, and our occupancy rate right now is lower than the national average. So, I guess my question is So I guess my question is, is this really a development we want to, that is needed, I guess? I guess where is the need? So with that, I have other questions, but I'll save them for next week. Thanks.
Pete, if he calls you up to ask you a question.
Sorry, I thought he asked a question.
All right. We'll go to Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I just have a comment. I don't have questions. I mean, I have tons of questions, but I'm not, I'm going to save myself. The definition would have been nice to know before tonight, because it gives us something to actually work with. So I have to mirror what Alderwoman Newton says. The information isn't disseminated to us in a timely fashion for us to make, I don't even want to say educated guess. It's just, it's not there. So this is something that's huge, and I am a longtime resident. I remember when the Howard Johnson was on that spot, and I remember how it went downhill because of everything that, so I get it. So I want to applaud you guys for what you're doing, but let me tell you how you get further with me as a councilperson, and I'm sure Alderwoman Newton, don't get in front of us and tell us what you're doing, show us what you're doing. So if you want to tell us what you're doing, bring some information handed to Deputy Corr and have it passed out, so therefore, we can follow this step-by-step, because hearing it secondhand, that doesn't do anything for us. Well, it doesn't do anything for me, because if that's the case, I got a bridge I can sell you. So, thank you.
Alderwoman Lynch?
Thank you. This is just a question for legal here, because I'm not familiar with development agreements with the city of Davenport, but it seems like there are a lot of unknown variables. And I understand that, I guess to an extent, I'd have to understand that you, we can't possibly foresee every problem that could arise. However, this specific, even in the early phases, it sounds like there are still a lot of unknown variables. Is it common for the city of Davenport to enter into a development agreement without more information known in those early stages? It seems, it just seems like we don't know a lot in the first few stages.
I guess I wouldn't want to know which variables you're speaking of in the agreement, and certainly happy to look at each one of those in terms of what information you would like to have. I don't want to guess about what those would be. So happy to take a look at each one of those variables and apply it to the case law here. And there's a fairly seminal case in Iowa around this. It's called the Blue Chip Case, and the court directly talks about liability and payment for cleanups, and how the court should go about determining that under DNR and federal law.
So, and thank you for that. Perhaps I should restructure my question, too. In the event that a developer, is there a provision in the agreement where if the developer is in perhaps breach of the development agreement, is there a provision somewhere in that agreement where the city can pull this agreement without risk of lawsuits?
So applying my contract law here, if a party's in breach, or if we feel that a party's in breach, or if the party feels that we're in breach, they would have to file an action, or we'd enter into mediation to try and resolve that breach, once identified. And there would be provisions saying, you know, if we feel that you have, there should be provisions in there that say, if we feel that there's a potential for breach, or that we're looking at a breach, that we would notify you of that and give you a period to cure what we feel is wrong. If you don't cure, then we would move through the legal.
That's what I'm asking.
Yep.
Do we have that verbiage in this development agreement?
If I can have the agreement in front of me.
Sure. I'm sorry. I don't know who reviews it from front to back, or who's in charge, but I, so I wasn't aware, but that's, that is my actual question, because it does, it's, I wanted to connect that with what Alderman Dunn said. I do have concerns as well. So I'm just trying to understand the legalities of, for both parties, if either one would need to, to, I guess, terminate this contract, if it's possible, and if that verbiage is in that contract. So, and I understand you don't have that answer right now, but I do think that is something that I would like to know. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderwoman Burkholder.
Thank you. I did want to echo what Alderwoman Newton said, that having information beforehand is very necessary. This did just show up on our agenda. I know it has been in the works for a while. But I think it's very important that we have the background information, the history, you know, the plans of what's out there, before we sit up here and try and talk about this. Looking at vacancy rates, hearing, you know, a percentage, huge percentage rebate, that's concerning to me. So the, these discussion, I do think this needs to be put on discussion. We just don't have a ton of information. We haven't, since it was put on discussion, we haven't had those discussions. So that's also another problem that we have here. Yeah, so if we could get some answers and some information, that would be great. Thank you.
We will go back to Alderwoman Newton.
Thank you. Just briefly, one of my colleagues mentioned something about a similar situation in the past with QC Times. Can the council receive information regarding that situation? When, what, where, what happened? Who was responsible? What that cost? Things of that nature. Too, I heard a lot of questions regarding the contract. I, too, have some questions, but I can follow up with legal. But one thing I want to point out, in the most recent agenda, it's still showing Nicole Gleason as acting city administrator, so that hasn't been updated to now reflect that it's our current administrator. And then lastly, I will echo what others say, that because of such, and because there's some information that still needs to get back to us, I think this item should go on discussion. Thank you.
Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thanks for letting me speak again. I did have, in hearing my colleagues' questions, I did have a couple of other questions and roll-through now there. We did receive a, I have a memo, I think we all got it on November 13th, which was a week ago, that had an extensive amount of information. So that was a week prior to this meeting tonight. And it has an extensive amount of questions that were answered. And since it was shared with us, it's certainly a public, it's something, you know, certainly is a public document as well. So one of the questions I had is, if I could, Mr. Stopples, if you could come back up, and I have other questions as well. There has been questions about the occupancy rate, why this would, why you feel like, you know, this is needed, or, and I can't speak to what was said, but if you can speak to who you're working with, who is, who is the entity that is working with you on this hotel, and who they are, and what their experience is in doing this, and all of that.
Sure. So Kinseth Hospitality Corporation out of Iowa City is our partner on this hotel. We've also invested them in other hotels in the area, in particular, the Bettendorf Hilton Garden Inn, which is, I think, the number-one hotel on the market in occupancy. They also, I think, only manage the Rock Island Holiday Inn, if I'm not mistaken. You would know that. And Bettendorf, actually, is a good, now that we talk about it, that Holiday Inn was an existing Kinseth hotel. If you may recall that building, it had the Bennigan's in it, or it was right there on Middle Road. And it was a two-story Holiday Inn, and just tired, but they did okay for them. They decided with, in partnership with Bettendorf, to knock that down and build a new five-story Bettendorf Hilton Garden Inn. And the only reason they were able to do that and transform that site was a city incentive that was much more robust than this one. It was a TIF agreement they put in place with Bettendorf, and created that outbuilding, Starbucks, the gas station, and the hotel. And it's worked out great for them. It's a lot better than having the two-story Bettendorf Hilton, with Holiday Inn that used to be there, in my opinion. As it relates to occupancy, yeah, those numbers, citywide, they also include hotels that would be considered less than desirable. In downtown Davenport right now, we haven't had a new construction hotel in a long time. We've had some renovation projects, obviously, the Blackhawk is a shining success story. The Blackhawk's also an autographed collection hotel, which is the top of the line in the Marriott brand. So the Marriott Bonvoy has, I think it's 200 million members in the United States, some massive number of Marriott Bonvoy members, that we're trying to capture in downtown Davenport, in the limited-service area. Right now, there are no limited-service hotels in downtown Davenport. This project was specifically brought to market in order to fill that need. So travelers are looking for kitchens. They're looking for places they can stay, on average, for us, we're hoping nine days to 90 days. This is not a weekend hotel, like the Blackhawk, or the Current, or the Doubletree. And the Doubletree is another step up from this hotel, in terms of level of service. So, yeah, the occupancy numbers may look weak county-wide or city-wide, but in reality, when the Kinseth hotels operate in a much higher occupancy, because they do a good job, and they keep their properties clean, and they operate them efficiently. And in this case, we look at it as a great opportunity to fill a void in downtown Davenport from a service level that doesn't exist today. Is that answered?
It does. And there extended, there was extended-stay hotels, there is not one in, I know there are ones in Davenport, but is there one in downtown?
Not in downtown.
And are there other cities that have them? In Quad Cities?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Bettendorf, the Courtyard, I think would be, or Home Two Suites, excuse me, there on Utica, would be considered an extended stay. And the goal with this extended stay is to capture the traffic to the arsenal from Tbk. If you go to Stompahawks or Front Street, you see a lot of baseball teams and basketball teams coming downtown. It's like, we want to get them to stay in Davenport. We don't want them, no offense to Bettendorf, where I live, we don't want them going out to Veterans Memorial, or to Forest Grove and staying out there. We want them in downtown Davenport. And extended-stay hotels with kitchens are really attractive to families that want to do that for longer than just two or three days.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have for you. If I could just, Mr. Berger, if, you know, this is information that was shared with everybody, but in terms of incentives, which, you know, everybody always has questions about, which I completely understand, you had provided several examples, you had been asked a question by councilmembers, what other things have been done, you know, in the downtown area related to these kind of incentive. And I don't want to misspeak your words, and so there, you had shown us, I think, three. One was the Quad City Plaza, which was, is now the Doubletree, I believe, correct? That was 1991, and let's keep in mind, this was when downtown was pretty well-gutted, I think. And the things you provided us, and it's, I know, I know this is old information, but it was a skywalk system, new sidewalks, a new parking ramp, which they might have built anyway, but that was part of the agreement. They, we had to build a parking ramp. I mean, that was an enhancement, I guess. That was in your list. There was a, there was a TIF, a tax increment financing of 245,000, and we don't know what the tax exemption was. And there was some contribution by the city for a real estate deal as well. Is that, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Great.
All right. And at that time, there was no URTE? So this project is asking for URTE, and you might want to explain what that is, as well as the hotel motel tax. So could you explain again for everybody here what URTE is, and how it's, how broad it is, or narrow?
Sure. Yeah, and, yeah, the, I think the question that was brought up a month ago was getting at, you know, what has the history been? And so that was some of the information you were quoting from, you know, this would be, there are three hotels currently in downtown. This would be the fourth. And, you know, one could argue, at least from the staff standpoint, that, you know, sometimes you've been sent that which you'd like to have happen. And so you saw from the Quad City Plaza in the early 90s, it was a fairly deep, quite a bit of partnership and a bit of investment. The Blackhawk Hotel and the Current Hotel were the two more recent ones, and still total in the, you know, north of, certainly north of 10 to 15 million in incentives. So by the time this fourth one comes along, you, I guess, from that standpoint, that's where staff sort of direction was, that probably warrants less of an incentive, or downtown is in a different place than it was certainly back in the 1990s. So along that front, all the other hotels involved a TIF, a property tax TIF. So in this case, we approached it from the urban revitalization tax exemption, or URTE, and that's usually a little bit less lucrative than a TIF, depending upon how the negotiations for a TIF go. With URTE, it's a state program that the state prescribes different scales, different schedules that you can use. And so, and you sort of use those, or you can ratchet them back, but they're sort of establish at least the maximums you can offer. And so, yeah, in this case, we relented to that lower incentive amount, and that, on this tough-to-develop site, I think, as I mentioned, maybe it was a few weeks before it landed on the agenda, that it was tough to, it was a tough-to-develop site. And so as a result, the developer asked if we could instead do a TIF, or do something more lucrative. And so we negotiated, and that's how we landed on the URTE incentive, as well as the hotel motel as the proposal anyways. Yeah, that's kind of the backstory in the memo.
So in the, in the, it just, I don't know, this was a different time, so it was tougher. 2008, the Blackhawk Hotel, its hotel motel tax rebate runs for 20 years, correct? And so does the Current, which was 2015, which is a little more recent. So Blackhawk Hotel is, was about a 15 million, and that included upfront TIF of 4.5 million, and a bridge loan for historic tax credit equity, which this wouldn't have an opportunity for at 8.5 billion. And then the Current, and I'm not criticizing these, I mean, this is what you have to do. And that was an empty building, again, a very big empty building. And that was, that is also a, it's an 18-year rebate that varies on the hotel motel tax. That was also TIF, and that was a $15 million rebate on TIF, right?
Correct.
All right. So you had, in your note, had said that it looks like that the get-back for this project would be between, the ask-for hotel motel, which goes to 15, it ends in 15 years.
Correct.
And also URTE would be about 5 million.
The total.
The total, so the total sort of benefit for this hotel would be five, and the others more like 19 and 15, and, all right, okay. And the other question I had is, right now, I think you said that there's, this land is providing $3,000 a year in property tax. I have that in here somewhere. So, and if, and if, so if the developer doesn't, this doesn't go forward, in other words, if the developer doesn't, if we have an agreement and he doesn't deliver on it, how much does he get from the city?
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, it would be, it would continue to be, if you don't meet the terms of the agreement, and again, depends on, I think, is your question, I kind of don't know what the, what the variable is there. But, yeah, if the agreement doesn't exist, there's no hotel motel.
He gets no hotel motel tax, and he gets no URTE.
Yeah, presumably, the URTE probably is in place if the building is completed, and there's an increase in assessed value, but since that just sort of rolls with the property. But, yeah, the hotel motel, if it, if it doesn't meet our agreement, would not.
But we're not out any TIF money, we're not out any.
Right, right. There's nothing upfront.
All right. Thank you. One other question I had, I'm sorry to keep going on, but one of the things, too, because I hear concern about, continued concern about, about what happens if there's the environmental. And one of the things that you had mentioned also was the land recycling program. Could you explain what that is, and what the possibilities for that might be here?
Sure. So with contaminated sites in Iowa, the Iowa DNR offers a voluntary program, and it really, from what they've explained to us recently and over the years, it's a protection really for the property developer, if you will. And yet, they don't see a lot of developers taking advantage of it. It does have an enrollment cost, and a lot of the Phase 1, the Phase 2, and some of the geotech stuff that they would do as a part of their project anyway. They submit that to the DNR, and then they work through with the DNR what mitigation plan, a cleanup plan, might be in doing the project. And then at the completion of that, the DNR checks that they actually complete that, and then they file a document against the property that is a certificate of completion that gives essentially, you know, 50 years after that fact, there's a problem with the property, or a lawsuit comes about, the developer is somewhat protected from that, because they can show that they followed the mitigation plan that the DNR experts had approved and certified. certified. A lot of, I'm just giving you the broad brush, but I think in most cases, developers have not, they don't usually participate in that program, because there's a cost, and they're doing some of that study anyway, and it's maybe with the advantage that we may not run into anything, and, and we'll, we'll take our chances and see what we do. It's, in the DNR's opinion, it's a little bit risky, so they love it when they do participate that, in that. So yeah, that, that was one thing that I included in the information for you all here a week or two ago, that that might be something worth maybe throwing in there if you have a concern about environmental conditions and what they would run into. Does seem as if, from our, our legal standpoint, that there's, there's not much risk from the city's end, but that would be one more added piece of protection you could put in there.
Thank you. Thanks for your thoroughness and the information you gave us last week. We appreciate it.
All right. We'll go to Alderman Jobin.
Thank you. So other than, you know, maybe having to find a different place to park when I run the turkey trot every year, I've been fairly ambivalent on this. Few things, and Alderman McGinnis kind of took one of my questions, and so I'll turn it into a little bit more of a statement. You know, I think twenty-five percents for ten years and fifty percent for an additional five years of hotel motel tax that we're not currently receiving is probably going to be greater than three thousand dollars a year that's currently being collected for empty, empty parking lot. So I think that's kind of a, a plus if we're looking at it that way. If I'm oversimplifying it, please, someone later help me out on that. So I'm not super concerned about, about the incentive, right? It's an empty lot, it's been undeveloped for a while since the previous structure went down. It's an eyesore. Again, it serves as a parking lot for me once a year when I run the turkey trot, so I don't, I don't think that's the best utilization for it. I do have a request of the developer. I would just ask that when Terricon or whoever you're hiring to do whatever they're doing, take more soil samples than they think they need to take, go deeper than they think they need to go. I'm assuming you want to protect your investment, I'm assuming you want to know what's in that ground, what's it going to cost, because I would think if, if I were putting my money forward, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to get out a lot of expense and then go, oh crap, what's here? Now I'm walking away. I think there's a track record with this developer of doing some pretty cool things downtown. I'm going to rely on that going forward, that Ts are going to be crossed, Is are going to be dotted. And so, you know, I, I look at this with the littlest angst as I go forward. Obviously, still, you know, we want to have our questions answered, we want to make sure that everything's just, just being done, and I, I don't think that's a negative. But I, I, I think there's a lot of good things that could be done. Hopefully, hopefully they can, and if they can't and they pose some challenges, let's get those answers, let's figure it out, or do something else. So that's all I got.
Thank you. We'll go back to Alderman Rick Dunn.
Thank you. Real quick, with the way the, the state has refigured our taxes, right? We're capped at a certain percentage of growth a year now. So are we actually going to see that growth from this project tax-wise? You don't have to answer that today. Second of all, hotel motel tax, right? What, what was it, when that originally, they came up with the hotel motel tax, what was that specific fund designed for? What was the parameters of that fund? I know I asked this question before, and I believe we answered it, but if somebody could answer the parameters of spending hotel motel tax?
I believe the intent is that fifty percent, up to fifty, fifty percent or more goes towards tourism development, so encouraging hotels, overnight stays. The rest of it is a discretionary source, up to fifty percent is discretionary source, that it could be used for other things.
Right. It could be used for other things, buying squad cars, fixing streets, doing whatever, you know, we as council members decide to do with it. Currently, we don't do that. I mean, if you look at how we spend hotel motel tax, you know, that, that's stuff that should be funded, like the, the FIGI, stuff like that. But instead of taking it out of that, we've rebated it back to all of these folks, which, fine. But now you take the FIGI, that's about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that probably should come out of hotel motel tax, comes out of the general fund, which funds other things, police fire, stuff like that. So, you know, as the state tightens up a little bit, I think we need to watch how we're spending our money as well, and, and, you know, giving away, keep, if we keep giving it away, we're going to deal with less. So that's all I got.
Thank you. We'll go back to Alderman Lynch.
Thank you, and I'll be very, very brief here. I think I just want to clarify that as a council, I don't think we're all just up here saying we don't want this development. I think I said last week, I, I saw the plans, I think it's beautiful. I am pro-development typically, so long as we're operating safely. I believe that it helps revitalize the riverfront, which we certainly need. The, the numbers don't lie, I think that's a no-brainer, so that wasn't oversimplifying. Yes, we were given a lot of information fourteen days ago, which for the average person, which I am, is a lot to process for a project of this magnitude. So I just want to kind of reiterate that. I don't think the council, and from what I'm hearing from my colleagues, is we have concerns, we just need some more time to discuss. I think there are things that we want to understand fully before we can make a true decision, but I think the general consensus is, at least for me, I know, I think it's a wonderful project, I would like to see it move forward, but we certainly need to make sure it's, it's going to be safe and obviously fiscally beneficial to the city of Davenport. So, thank you.
All right. All right. Seeing no one else, I do, I do have some comments. So typically, when we talk about incentivizing developments, what we really want to incentivize is projects that would not happen if not for incentives. And so I, I think this is one of those, those projects that clearly needs incentives because it's a challenging property with where it is regarding flooding and regarding the contamination of the ground. So the, the site has some challenges, but we want to develop this land. It was developed before, it was a hotel before. In this case, it's going to be a hotel plus some commercial office, and, and so this, this is good. In my opinion, this is the type of thing that, that city should be incentivizing because it wouldn't happen without that. And to be honest, it, it's an eyesore. It's an eyesore from a, a few different perspectives. As Alderman Jobin just said, the turkey trot, he parks down there, the BICs, a lot of the BICs activities happen around down there. So when you have people who come into Davenport once a year, this is one of the properties they look at to kind of gauge where Davenport is, is headed from a redevelopment standpoint. And so getting it redeveloped would be a, a big, a big win. And then we've already mentioned that the boats, when the tourists come in off of the, the cruise ship, this is one of the first properties they see. And currently, I don't think they, they probably think that it's a, it's a good welcome mat for the city. Now, I, I think really why this project makes sense is from a financial perspective. So you heard the, it's, the, the property currently generates three thousand dollars a year in property taxes. It's unclear to me if that is the total that they pay, which then gets cut up between the county, the school district, and the city, or if three thousand dollars is what the city gets. But anyway, it's very insignificant. If you put a hotel here plus a commercial office, you are going to generate property tax, sales tax, and hotel motel revenue. That is money that we currently do not bring in the coffers. If you understand our, our financial position in the city, we have negotiated contracts with all of our, our union folks in the city. That means every year, our budget gets bigger by plan, okay? And if you do not increase the revenue that you bring in as a city by that same amount, okay, you will get into decrement years, which we have not had now in nine years, and we don't want to have, and we won't have, if we continue to do good development, which we have been doing recently. So remember, if we don't do this, this property will not generate any additional tax revenue than the three thousand dollars. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't say that this is infill development. The reason why it is really great development is it because, because it comes with no additional infrastructure. We just had a discussion item for Fair Oaks. Fair Oaks is being built in a cornfield and, and needs sewer and streets and a lot of infrastructure that currently doesn't exist. We currently don't have to plow, we currently don't have to maintain, we don't have to have a plan to replace. This development is infill development. The sewer exists, the streets exist, we're already taking care of it. That's why this is important. So understand the concerns, thought it was a great discussion, and before I let the mayor say something, I did want to, this packet that Bruce put together was very good, but I think specifically the portion from the Iowa DNR, Mr. Penns, he said a couple of things that have been brought up a, a few times tonight that I, I want to read what, what he wrote. All right. And this is in regards to the city's liability. Given the nature of the residual contaminants from past environmental analysis of the site, if the developer begins excavation and then decides to abort the project, the cost to safely return the site to pre-construction level is minimal. And that comes after about a paragraph of why, they talk about why the city would not be liable if, if something like that happened. He also points out that the prediction from the Iowa DNR is that the site will be easier to redevelop than the Quad City Times building site. And then at the end, he says, he reiterated that if a ground disturbing project moves forward on this particular site, the Iowa DNR should certainly be consulted, but that this is a garden variety site in terms of contamination. There are dozens of similar sites in Davenport and hundreds across Iowa. It is their hope that many are safely redeveloped every year.
Mayor Mattson?
Thank you, Chair, for letting me speak. So I'll apologize if I go a little different here, meaning I'm trying to give some history because a lot of things have been mentioned. So one of the reasons I believe we tabled it is so that we can gather more information. I, too, had many concerns when this was brought, because, as I discussed with many of the staff, I was not informed as much that I think I should have been about this particular site because I knew of the history that had been discussed before. There, I was here and was part of many discussions on previous opportunities that were looked at, and there were many discussions about superfund words and environmental concerns and brownfields or contamination, et cetera, et cetera. Asked for research, more information, and, and during the table time, some of that was given, and I appreciate much of the explanation tonight, so everybody is aware where it really stands. But I certainly remember the discussions at the previous. I, too, and it's been brought up about the other places downtown, was a very new member many, many years ago when the Current and the Blackhawk were discussed. I was the only no vote on that, and people certainly remember that and give me still a hard time about that. But that was even what was said tonight. There was another thing that, that was a property tax cap that has never been before done in Iowa, and to this day, never been done. I don't understand it, but that's the way it fell out. But through my years of being involved in state stuff, coalition stuff, city stuff, et cetera, the understanding and evolution of what you need to do to be competitive and what you need to do, which sometimes is difficult, and sometimes it takes a lot of discussion, or for me, years of discussion to understand points, i.e., if you give an incentive for something that is common, that's confusing. If you are giving incentives to bring something that will draw attention or draw people, i.e. this particular case, assuming the environmental things, and I appreciate the developer giving us some understanding, I asked for that continued, I know you've been challenged a bit, asked for that continuing, more information's better than not. But the evolution of that understanding and how incentives work, and this one's not near the level of the Blackhawk and Current, to be clear, bringing something that's different on our front porch. And for full disclosure, I was just up in Cedar Rapids today, talking about a new casino in another city, and how important that is, that we don't do that with the other nineteen licenses, and what the involvement of our place and city and front porch and how we incentivize and how we bring people here, and how important it is to Iowa, and how important it is to Davenport to understand the competitive nature of things. So I appreciate the environmental stuff, still looking for a little bit more maybe information to help us understand it. Today was very helpful. But knowing what happened in the past and knowing the evolution and knowing what this is, I think it would be a wonderful project, assuming we work out the particular details that have yet to been by the college, by the council here. We need a few more answers yet. Assuming the environmental things work out, and assuming that we can get some of these questions answered, this is an unusual project, and it is something that will bring attention with the other things that we do, and certainly giving some incentive to be competitive in a market that is becoming more competitive. And the latest data shows that some of the hotel stuff, some of the motel stuff, some of the incentive stuff is softening. The data's pretty specific in that recently. And so an opportunity to take something that will draw is probably not going to last too long. That's just a fact of where the market is now. So I would encourage a little more information, certainly more dialogue, certainly, I think that's very important, and certainly some questions here. But as the evolution has happened in the competitiveness that we need to be in, I would encourage that we at least move forward on this, because it will be a very unusual project. And certainly, if we don't do anything, we get nothing. At least we get something, and, and it's not near the level of some of the other things we did, which actually have ended up to be quite the attention getter in our downtown, and this will be one. So I just wanted to throw my piece, I appreciate you giving me some time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Item number four, we'll stay on discussion, and we'll head to item number five, which is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of the vacated unimproved right-of-way located west of Marquette Street between West Seventh Street and the mid-block alley to Jack's Home Improvement Company petitioner. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number six is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed extension of the Village of East Davenport Self-Supporting Municipal Improvement District. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving a subaward agreement with Live Lead Free Quad Cities for the remediation of lead paint and housing using remaining American Rescue Plan Act funding. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving a subaward agreement with 180 for housing acquisition and rehabilitation activities using remaining American Rescue Plan Act funding. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving a subaward agreement with Ecumenical Housing, bless you, Development Group for housing acquisition and rehabilitation activities and to demolish an abandoned house using remaining American Rescue Plan Act funding. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number ten is a resolution approving a subaward agreement with Vera French Housing to construct housing using remaining American Rescue Plan Act funding. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number eleven is a resolution approving a subaward agreement with the Salvation Army QC for rent assistance using a remaining American Rescue Plan Act funding. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. And our final item for community development this evening is a resolution approving a subaward agreement amendment with the Davenport Community School District for temporary housing assistance to address students experiencing homelessness using remaining American Rescue Plan Act funding. Is there anyone from the public? State your name and address or word, please.
Justin Oles, second ward, and I just wanted to kind of give input on this. As I was growing up as a teenager, there was a lot of kids in the Davenport School District that were homeless and didn't attend school. I believe this is something that not only I, but the rest of us can actually back and approve of, and that it would be a good thing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Anyone from the council? All right. Mayor Mattson?
I just want to take a moment, say thanks to staff for putting some of this together and to the council for your engagement.
and to the council for your engagement and understanding some of the issues and, and your willingness to help a lot of different entities. So appreciate that and thank you very much.
All right. Alderman Reinhards, would you please set our agenda?
Thank you. I make a motion to place item number four, leave item number four on discussion. And items one through 12 noting that item number two has been amended to the consent agreement, to the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, our agenda has been set. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Griffin, Alderman Reinhards. Next area is public safety. Alderman Jobchin, Alderman Tim Dunn will discuss. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a resolution approving a street closure request on the listed date and time for an outdoor event. Village of East Davenport Business Association, Christmas in the Village, Village of East Davenport, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Friday, December 6th, 2024, and Saturday, December 7th, 2024. Closures, Mount Street from East 11th Street to East 12th Street. Is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, motion approving a noise variance request on the listed date and time for an outdoor event. Village of East Davenport Business Association, Christmas in the Village, Lindsay Park, 2205 East 11th Street, around 9:00 PM for approximately 15 to 20 minutes, Saturday, December 7th, 2024. Fireworks over 50 DBA. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Then item number three, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those under section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. First, German-American Heritage Center and Museum, 712 West Second Street, outdoor area license type, special class C beer wine on premises. Uh, next, the Vintage Wine Bar, 421 West River Drive, temporary outdoor event, 1204 through 1208, license type, special class C beer wine on premises. And then there was, those items listed under section B, the annual license renewals, which I will not read, but are there for your review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of those items? Seeing none, go to council. Seeing none, I would ask Alderman Tim Dunn, please set our agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to put all items of public safety on the consent agenda. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin, Alderman Tim Dunn. Next area is to discuss his public works. Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kim Kelly will discuss. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution accepting work completed under the Davenport Municipal Airport South Ramp Reconstruction Project by Langman Construction in the amount of $1,212,807. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving change order number one in the amount of $104,100 to Play Pro Recreation for the Emice Park Phase Two Adaptive and Inclusive Playground Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the renewal of the contract for the OnCall Sewer Tevising, Inspecting and Cleaning Services with Klein Sewer and Drain Company in the amount not to exceed $300,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding a contract for the base bid of the Main Street Landing Project to Valley Construction in the amount of $14,899,000 and adding $1,562,481 contingency funds for a total of $16,461,481. And before I ask for public with comment, I would ask, uh, Director Merritt to come up. We, council did have some questions, I believe you're going to answer them before we get started here.
Yes, sir. Uh, so it's Clay Merritt. I'm your director of engineering capital projects. So there have been some questions, um, generally in the last few days, um, specifically regarding the geotechnical report that the city commissioned as part of the early phases of design. And so I wanted to kind of come up here and hopefully address those a little bit, um, that maybe will provide some confidence to both the council and the public as well. Um, and actually, as it relates to that, um, one of the things I did, I reached out today to, um, a couple of the engineers that then designed the actual work. And so that way you can kind of hear from them rather than necessarily just from me. So if you will permit me really quickly, I have a couple of statements that, um, they would like me to read on their behalf. The first of three, um, is from Sasaki. Um, their particular civil engineer record, um, um, is who signed and stamped the civil drawings for the site condition. So specifically think grading and pavement that's going to be going there. Um, they said, "Our team took the recommendations from the geotechnical report into considerations during the design of the Main Street Landing Project. We have provided the report to the contractor as part of the bid process, so they are fully aware of the existing conditions and the geotechnical recommendations. Our focus during the design process was to minimize risk while balancing budget on realities of the project. Specifically, we took the following steps. The report provides recommendations for testing and compaction of the subbase prior to improvements being installed. Any soft or unsuitable soils will be removed and replaced per the geotechnical report. Where we place significant fill above known existing utilities, we provided lightweight fill to minimize impact to those facilities. We minimize fill over the existing sanitary sewer collection, um, collector after discussion with city engineering staff. In areas with new fill, the geotechnical report provides recommendations for settlement on periods to minimize impacts on future improvements. Um, we, Sasaki, ourselves and the contractor, will work with the contractor to provide these recommendations into the construction schedule during the pre-construction meeting. The proposed me, um, pavement thickness, um, meet and generally exceed the thicknesses recommended within the report." Um, and once again, this is their, this is from their engineer who had, who is a licensed, uh, civil engineer of the last 19 years. Um, the second one, uh, is from H.R. Green. They were a subconsultant of our consultant, Sasaki, um, specifically the gentleman who designed and stamped his own particular portion of the plans. Um, he did the, uh, underground utility work. Um, he said, uh, "H.R. Green's design of sewer and water pipe for the Main Street Landing Project is based on standard specifications for Iowa SUDAS, that is the specifications we follow as a city, that require the contractor to excavate trenches for sewer and water pipe below the bottom of the pipe and cover, cover the bottom of the trench in a layer of stone. The depth of overexcavation is based on the size and material of the pipe as well as the quality of the soil. This approach, this approach prevents pipes from settling even in poor, poor soils." Um, the third engineer who we reached out to, we thought would be interesting for the council and the public to hear is the structural engineer for the project. Um, that is from Shy Pattery. Shy Pattery is a local, well-known engineering firm, um, in this area. The gentleman, um, who designed and stamped this set of plans has 37 years of experience. Um, many of you may actually be aware of, um, some of his work. One in particular is he is who, he is the individual who designed our flood protection system around Modern Women Park. So he has some experience in the area. Um, in, in, um, in saying he provided some history of the area, I, I will bore you not to have to sit here and read the whole time. Uh, but the soil borings do not reflect, um, fills of the type present downstream of the Centennial Bridge where a former city landfill was located. The fills on the Main Street Landing Site are mostly granular and don't include municipal waste. It is likely that the materials encountered during the Main Street Landing Construction will be like those found during the construction of the Modern Women Park Flood Wall during the 2011 to 2012, um, reflecting the site's previous use as a railroad yard. The geotechnical report, uh, recommends, uh, drilled shafts to rock for major structures like the pedestrian bridge. Um, this is in keeping with other major structures on the riverfront like the Sky Bridge and Modern Women Park. Deep foundations to rock are not likely to settle or be damaged by flooding. Lastly, um, lighter structures, structures, excuse me, like the park restroom building, play structures and retaining walls will be placed on shallow spread footings. Shallow spread footings typically extend four feet deep to get below frost. The geotechnical report recommended, um, allowable soil bearing pressures of roughly between 1,500 and 2,000 PSF, pounds per square foot. Um, this is in line with the allowable, um, soil bearing pressures used to design storm sewer structures upstream and at Modern Women Park's flood walls downstream of the park site. The park structures, um, structures on shallow footings are designed with reinforced concrete footings, one to two, three, um, two feet thick comparable to nearby flood wall footings at Modern Women Park. And these flood wall footings have preferred wells despite numerous floods. So I thought it was important to read something specifically from the, um, the individuals who are licensed and experienced, um, specifically in the areas that they designed the project. So if you have any questions, um, once, uh, public with comment, I'm happy to answer those. Thank you all.
Now, is there anyone from public wishing to comment?
Judith Lee's second ward. And my only question on this is I just want to make sure that all the costs associated with dealing with the soils in that case, we know it's not like the dump, but it is similar stuff upstream, uh, I suspect. I just want to make sure that that is all incorporated into these costs and will come in as change orders later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding a contract for the Sky Bridge Lighting Enhancement Project to Crawford Company in Mount not to exceed $408,261. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lynch?
Thank you, and I apologize. I, I think I missed this one altogether, so I just have a quick question. If someone from staff can elaborate, what, what we're, what exactly is this?
Sure. Um, excuse me. So when we, um, first built the Destination Iowa Grant, um, application, we included, um, upfitting some new enhancements for the lighting at the Sky Bridge. Um, I'm going to try to roll Alderman Kelly's question in from yesterday into this answer. Um, the Sky Bridge lighting was first installed roughly in 2007 to 2008. So they're approximately 16 years of age. Um, the infrastructure for the lighting is well past its useful life. Had a conversation with our IT department, um, today. Um, we struggle to find, um, fixes. So as with everything, things break, things need to be replaced. Um, most of these, um, components and pieces are actually no longer manufactured. I'm talking the existing stuff that's there are no longer manufactured, um, by that company. And so we, um, we retrofit, um, um, things to make those, um, those items work. We also need to manually, um, program, go onsite to program. So when all of you say that you want to, um, uh, celebrate, um, anything in particular and you want it to be lit up as blue or green, um, in, in advance of something, we do need to have someone physically go there to, um, switch it. It's not done, it's not be able to done, be done remotely. Uh, and part of that reason I found out today, um, for, so for Alderman Kelly, is, um, the interfaces back then didn't exist for, um, uh, remote, uh, learning. So everything had to physically be done onsite, so.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding contract for the engineering services for the Goose Creek Park Streambank Stabilization and Environmental Restoration Project to Econ Incorporated in the amount of $266,986. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding a contract for the Davenport Public Works Building Partial Masonary Wall Repair Project to E&amp;H Restoration in the amount of $160,493. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number eight is a resolution approving a construction agreement with the Iowa American Water Company, Quad City District, for the Main Street Landing Water Main Extension Project in the amount of $205,892.16. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Glad to. Like I make a motion to move all eight items to the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The agenda is set and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Tim Kelly. The last item, uh, to discuss is finance. Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch will discuss. Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight, Alderwoman Lynch and I have three items on our agenda. The first, resolution approving the purchase of a rescue boat for the fire department from Northwest Bend Boats LLC, doing business as North River Boats of Roseburg, Oregon, in the amount of $779,838.75. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Dunn, Rick Dunn?
Real quick, is this a new boat or is this, uh, is this a replacement or just really, that's good, just a replacement? Thank you.
Anyone else from council? Seeing none, this item moves on. Uh, item number two, resolution approving a payment in the amount of $121,961.72 to Carisoft Technology Corp. of Russian Virginia for the annual renewal of Managed Detection and Response, MDR, and Identity Threat Protection, ITP, software for the period of November 30th, 2024 to November 29th, 2025. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves on. And item number three, resolution awarding a contract for golf cart leasing to Harris Golf Cars of Dubuque, Iowa in the annual amount of $104,700. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item moves on. And with that, I would ask Alderwoman Lynch to please set our agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to place items one through three on the consent agenda.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? All that, without any carries, and our agenda set. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch. Next area is, uh, are there any ordinances, resolutions or motions? There are none. Um, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second, all in favor? Very good. We are adjourned. Have a great day and weekend.